Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the Common Council's order. I'll ask our clerk to call a roll to determine a quorum. Alderman May is expected.
Alderman Lysick.
Here.
May will be here shortly. Reiki.
Here.
Brode.
Here.
Stepansky.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigl.
Here.
Barzac.
Here.
Shapleski.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Lysick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, item D on our agenda is one public hearing. I'll ask our clerk to read out the public hearing.
Resolution relative to determination of special use permit for West Ellis, West Milwaukee Community Recreation Center for a gymnasium and recreation facility to be constructed onto the existing building at 2450 South 68th Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go into our traditional two-dimensional PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to provide you with a 3D round of the project. The proposal is going to be a 12,500 existing square foot building, as noted in this area here, with about a 30,000 square foot addition. There'll also be provided a new parking lot. There'll be a playground for tots, preschool children in this area. And the north area will be pretty much as it currently is with the basketball hoops and the fitness materials. The parking lot is slightly smaller than it could have been, but the big reason was that we were recommending, along with the school administration, that we keep that area mostly green, and we'll get into that a little bit. The building is precast concrete, brick, metal panels, and windows. And you'll see a lot of windows in this development. And this is coming up now as the south side of the building. There's also room for about a 6,700 fives square foot addition or expansion, and if so, that'll come at a later date. Because it's a recreational facility, it's a special use, even though it's in a park district. And that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening. It is the special use. The existing wall area of the southwest, southeast corner, as noted in here, will actually be removed and the topography reshaped. The only disconcerting feature of that is this was built by either the WPA or the Civilian Conservation Corps. However, some of the bricks and the sign that designated will also be reincorporated into the project. The softball fields will be relocated. I think Clentz Park has taken over what the Lady Bulldogs used to be able to, was used to using. As I mentioned, the 12,300 square foot building will stay. At the 31,000, it'll be 25,000 square foot on the ground floor, about 3,700 if needed. And there'll be gyms, multipurpose rooms, fitness class, and a walking trail. The new parking lot, as I mentioned, I think the existing parking lot is about 40 parking spaces. This will be 80. Theoretically, we require about 136 parking spaces, but that was the area would take up so much green space, we're recommending, and the Plan Commission is recommending, that we not do that because there's ample parking throughout the whole perimeter. The uses are noted on this slide. Survival live will continue. Administrative offices, recreational area, gymnasium, changing rooms, multipurpose rooms, and early childhood development. The major reason here is that we would lose so much of the parking if we were to create a larger parking lot. And that's why in this special use, we're costing a variance to the parking requirements. As noted here, you can see the existing building is proposed to be painted. I think we're working with the architect, CG Smith, to look at something else other than just painting it. But this building will be composed of brick, glass, pre-processed corrugated metal, and precast panels and brick. As you're all probably aware, the school district ran into some issues, whether it's relative to cost. And I think with the Recreation Department and the Development Team, they did a marvelous job of keeping the quality and the character of the building intact. And so we didn't really lose a whole lot. They sacrificed very minimal, but they made enough savings. I think they still retained a rather beautiful and it can be very interesting building. The significant change that we had proposed on the building was on the east wall was this kind of blank, unarticulated wall to put windows in, and they've approved of putting in the windows. So we'll see a little bit different. We think that'll give it a better quality and a character to the neighborhood and give it more livable experience. One of the nice things that they did with that building is they kept its size so it doesn't look like a huge impactful building, being that's broken up in enough areas that it's kind of integrates well into the neighborhood. As I mentioned, they're going to be removing all the chain link vacancies except for an area that I'll show you. And they're resloping this. And also going to have their stormwater retention area in this area as well. And additional trees, additional landscaping, as noted here. They did effect a very excessive public hearing process, and then the traditional notices. And they met with the public at the Recreation Department three times and with the Plan Commission. And I think they did a great job of integrating the neighborhood's comments into the design and functionality of the property. If you have additional questions, I or a representative of the school district would be able to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the members of the Common Council? Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
John, I personally think those precast panels look pretty ugly. What are they doing for landscaping to correct that on the north and south sides of the building?
Particularly, I think this here is, yes. So there's going to be more landscaping on the east side of the building and on the south side of the building. The landscaping that's currently on the north side will just be reconditioned to what it's currently proposed to be.
Okay.
The fencing will remain along the residential area, but the rest of the fence will be taken out. They're going to be getting rid of the lighting, which I think should be an advantage to the neighborhood. They're going to reinstall three new light poles. But photometrics shows that all the light sprays stays within the property lines. It spills over a little bit on the west side, but other than that, it's really quite good.
In terms of bike racks, where are they located? I mean, for a recreational facility, we definitely want people to be able to bike, to get their workout while they go to the rec center. Where are those located on the site?
They should be located near the front door.
Okay. I think I saw on the staff recommend, or the Plan Commission recommendation, 10 bike racks. Just want to make sure we're going to get that out of there. And then what happens, and I apologize, I was late. What happens to the soccer and baseball fields? Where do those individuals end up playing?
The ball fields of the Lady Bulldogs will now be played at Clentz Park, which the city just spent about a quarter million dollars reconditioning that park. And so those activities will move over to that park.
Okay, and then the soccer?
Good question. I'll have the answer for you before the public, after the public hearing.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, myself, really, I envision, really, in many ways, the proposal from the school district has so much of enhancement, I believe, totally for the neighborhood because based on some clips of video that was seen at the last meeting that I did attend at the rec department at Fairview. I mean, it really will enhance the land, you know, the landscaping, the trees that are going to be put at the site, you know. I think it will be improve the area of the neighborhood very gracefully, you know. Really, I'm 100% in favor for, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Common Council? If there are no questions from the council, are there any questions from the members of the audience? Seeing none, we will close our public hearing. And we will now move on to item E on our agendas. So if there is anybody in the audience wearing an Olympic medal, will they please come up here? And Ken. It's been a while since West Dallas got to welcome home an Olympic medalist. So I'm sure a lot of you are aware that earlier this year, Ryan and Ken were selected to compete in the Special Olympics World Games in Abu Dhabi. And I have known the Canotl family for quite a few years, probably 11, 10. And I got to see them off at the airport one morning, which was a little frantic, but they made their flights. And I was following their journey on social media, and they ended up meddling in the Special Olympics in golf. So I'm going to read this real quickly. And then I'll give them an opportunity to say a few words if they would like to. But we are all very proud of these two individuals. Even though Ken is from West Milwaukee, we still love him like our own. Whereas, West Dallas native and 2012 Nathan Hale High School graduate, Ryan Canotl, is a member of Special Olympics Wisconsin and has participated in many of its events, including basketball, track and field, and golf. And whereas, Ryan was the 2017 Special Olympics state gold medalist for mini javelin, earned his first degree black belt in karate in 2018, and has been a best buddies of Wisconsin participants since 2010. And whereas, along with his longtime coach in Special Olympics activities, Ken Kumerlein of West Milwaukee, Ryan and player-coach Ken were selected to participate in golf for Team USA in this spring's World Games in Abu Dhabi. Whereas, Ryan and Ken completed the Unified Alternate Shot Team Play, alternating swings over nine holes, taking on teams from all over the world. Whereas, playing over four days on the 44th ranked course in the world, Ryan and Ken prevailed and emerged with a bronze medal for Unified Alternate Shot Golf at the 2019 Special Olympics World Games. Whereas, proud of the way he played, Ryan's favorite part of the whole experience was meeting other athletes from around the world and making new friends. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the City of West Dallas, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2019, as Ryan Canotl Day. I invite the West Dallas community to join me in extending heartfelt congratulations to Ryan on his outstanding achievement and commend him for representing his hometown and state on the world stage for Special Olympics. So Ryan and Ken, congratulations.
Well, first I want to say thank you very much. This is a huge honor. We were happily, I mean, the whole experience was great. The fact that we were out of the tens of thousands of people that coached and volunteered for Special Olympics, the fact that we were able to represent Wisconsin was a huge honor to us. And we were blown away with the opportunity to go there and do that. I took it upon myself, because I'm from Wisconsin, I tried to explain where Wisconsin was from, where Milwaukee is. I couldn't drill down quite enough to where West Dallas was. Just trying to get around Wisconsin. We were near Chicago. And then at the golf course, I was able to convince them, like, oh, you know the place where they're playing the Ryder Cup next year? Yeah, we're just south of that. So we're the town near where they're playing the Ryder Cup. So for people overseas, that was easy. But the entire trip was amazing, being able to see Abu Dhabi and the country of the Emirates, the way they welcomed us and the way they took care of the event. It was an amazing experience. They did an amazing job of treating like it was a real Olympics. So Ryan had a great time. I had a great time there. We tried to, you know, tried to represent Wisconsin and West Dallas as best we could. And I think we did a good job.
Thanks a lot, really. Congratulations. Absolutely. Congratulations. Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, congrats. Thanks again. These things are great, too.
Oh, yeah.
I think we have on a pond.
But we'll have to take a picture later, just find this way. Or whenever you take pictures with it.
Awesome.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks so much. Thanks again. And now I'd like to ask up our former alderperson from the second district, Eric Oitnire. Welcome back. Also, as a lot of you probably know, we had a resignation on the Common Council, and we had nine people apply for the second district alderperson position. And the Common Council did interviews. And Eric was one of the nine, and he was selected to fill out a year of the term up until the election in April. So I just wanted to take a moment and thank him for serving the community, for stepping up to run. And I got an idea that was presented to me by Alderman May on something that they do in the city of Waukesha. So just as a brief token of the appreciation for the public service that Eric has provided, we got a street sign. So Eric had really spearheaded a couple of initiatives in his time on the council, and I'm confident that they will be followed through and come to fruition. I'd also just wanted to give you the chance to, I can hold your street if you want to say a few words.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thanks.
So I just want to take a few moments to thank the mayor, the council, and the dedicated city workers here in West Dallas. I have learned so much from all of you this past year that I am truly grateful and blessed to have met each and every one of you. Each of you are a wealth of knowledge, and I'm extremely privileged to have served alongside of you all. Also, thank you to the fine citizens of West Dallas, especially those in District 2, for allowing me to get to know you. Some of you have even welcomed me into your homes this past year while campaigning or introducing myself. It was a tremendous honor to get to know each and every one of you on such a personal level and talk about things that bring us together as a community and how we can make things better versus talking about what separates us. I'd also like to thank my partner, Brad, who for the past year has had to endure an increased amount of various emotions and stubbornness and who has helped me onto my path of success. On a final note, there were so many wonderful experiences I had while serving the residents of West Dallas. But there is one that stands out to me the most, and that is what the action of service really means, which is something that I hope the others after me will take to heart. Civil service allows you to engage on a level of understanding and compassion that is unlike anything else. The moment when you know nothing about the homeowner, the renter, the business owner, and they know nothing about you. Sounds awfully scary, but there is actually something great about it. You are now on an even playing field to use that compassion and understanding to find common ground or to find out what brings us together rather than looking for what divides us. We are neighbors of every background, black, brown, white, gay, straight, transgendered, liberal, or conservative. We are all unique, special, strong in our own ways, and we must all work together to do everything we can stop the hate and bigotry in the hearts of those that continue to try to divide us. We should all remember the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "Hatred paralyzes life; love releases it. Hatred confuses life; love harmonizes it. Hatred darkens life; love illuminates it." Thank you.
Eric, I'm going to quit so I can get a street sign. Thank you again. Next up will be item G, which is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matters of interest to them. We ask that you limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. We cannot take action on topics raised by the speakers, and we cannot discuss the topics because they are not technically on our agenda. We are here to listen. Does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
I like being first. That means you're really listening. My name is Barbara Velez, and for several years I have helped to steer Beyond Vision's fundraising needs. I have also had the honor to mentor Nick Chableski. He no longer needs my guidance. Rather, he is teaching me. I'm speaking tonight because my roots run deep in West Dallas. I grew up next door to the Barzac family, a different Gary, we've ascertained, but nonetheless, whose house and yard were always full of people and toys and good times. My mother was born here and lived her entire 88 years within its boundaries, as did most of her nine brothers and sisters. One of my sisters, several of my nieces and nephews, a multitude of cousins, and many of my friends still live in West Dallas. I went to West Dallas Elementary and Secondary Schools. Growing up here, I learned many, many lessons, and this city helped to shape many of the values that I hold dear. I'm hoping that the people governing West Dallas will make a difference in the lives of hundreds and perhaps thousands of people who are blind and their families. The Beyond Vision Ability Center, when located in the former Sam's Club property on South 108th Street, will serve as a beacon of help and hope for people who are blind and their families. The employees, present and future, of Beyond Vision are not looking for a handout, but indeed are looking for a helping hand up. Beyond Vision is a social enterprise operated with a sense of fairness and mindful of the services and central location of the city of West Dallas. That's why West Dallas. May is National Mental Health Awareness Month, drawing attention to a segment of the country's population struggling with an often misunderstood disease. Blindness is also often misunderstood. Witness the 70% unemployment rate for working age adults who are blind here in the state of Wisconsin. But blindness is not misunderstood at Beyond Vision. At Beyond Vision, people who are blind and their families are celebrated, respected, and understood. It is my hope the city of West Dallas governing body will applaud Beyond Vision's plan to relocate in West Dallas and will welcome the diversity and character this organization provides. It is my hope that I can continue to be proud of my hometown and the decision made here this evening.
Thank you. I would just ask our speakers to give us their name and address for our record, please.
Good evening, Jim Curlin. I'm president of Beyond Vision. My home address is in Cedarburg. Our work address is in Milwaukee on State Street, 54th and State Street. First of all, I want to say, Ryan, congratulations once again. That's awesome. It's not about disability, right? It's about ability. And you demonstrated that. Thank you. I don't have a prepared set of remarks, but I prepared for you a folder of information. My purpose here tonight is to really add texture to the conversation that we started last or two weeks ago at the safety and planning meeting. I included in your folder, on the left side, is information about Beyond Vision that I'll let you look at at your leisure. In the annual report, one of the pages in the annual report, that's this smaller size folder or brochure, there's a picture and description of the Ability Center that we plan to create by repurposing the Sam's Club that we are under contract to purchase. There's some other information I'll let you look at at your leisure. In case you haven't already seen it, on the right side of the brochure is a copy of the Biz Times article that was written shortly after our safety and development meeting two weeks ago. Just for your information, they contacted us. Apparently, it's a reporter that follows your agenda, watches your agenda. And I thought he did a really nice job of creating a sort of a balanced and factual news article for us. So in case you haven't seen it, that's included. The next item I'd like to show you and articulate is is that our outlot plan that we started talking about last week, there seemed to be a lot of confusion about what that meant, what the details were of that. So this set of slides, the first one is just a crayon sketch of my drawing of the outlot plan with our board member, showing that there would indeed be a commercial outlot development that would take place between the building that we're talking about, the former Sam's Club, and Highway 100. So and the key point of that is the Sam's Club would then be three properties set back from Highway 100. And I think in keeping with your potential development plan of Highway 100 becoming a commercial corridor, is I think how we've heard it referred to. And the next slide inside there is, shows, there were some questions in our safety and development meeting about what the potential tax revenues from the development that outlot would be. This was done by one of John's staff members, basically back calculating parking spaces available and needed and what a potential property might look like. So we came out to about a 52,000 square foot building that could generate up to, if it was optimal, up to 145,000 in new tax revenues for the city that, as part of our pilot agreement, would indeed reduce our pilot payment to the city. But the city would be guaranteed. Our proposal is to guarantee the city that amount, no matter whether it comes out of our pocket. If we never develop that outlot, then we come out of pocket with the full 72% of the normal taxes. This next slide provides some, a lot of the questions that came up during the safety and development meeting had to do with what did the surrounding area look like? So this is an aerial shot, it's Google Maps, and each of the properties labeled. And again, I think it demonstrates fairly well this idea that because this property would then be set back three properties from Highway 100, and indeed, straight to the south are two industrial properties. One is Amalgam Composites. And I'm not sure the other one, the Google Maps wouldn't tell us. To the north is the residential community, the trailer park. And to the east is the railroad track and the trailer park. So just adding clarity, because there was some questions that came up about that. But again, I think because we're proposing to develop this outlot, I think even if your study turns out to say yes, it should be a commercial corridor, I think our plan is in perfect alignment with that. That's my opinion, but I just want to point that out. The last of these slides that I've included in your package, one of the topics that came up during our safety and development, and again, my whole purpose here is to try to address, I went back and looked at the video, and I really wanted to try to address all the questions that people had during that conversation. And we had a conversation about, you know, it's not just about property taxes. It's also, it's a fact that people who are visually impaired and blind tend to want to live close to where they work. So there will no question be a lot of employees, one of them told you last, at that meeting, yeah, I live a mile from Beyond Vision now. If we move to West Dallas, I'm going to be moving to West Dallas because I want to live within walking distance or at least a single bus ride to where I work. They also, and this pin map, by the way, just demonstrates that. So this is a cluster map of where demonstrates that. So this is a cluster map of where our employees are around our current location, and you can see the concentration is quite naturally because they use public transportation or walking quite naturally. So we will have a lot of employees, perhaps hundreds of employees eventually, moving into West Dallas area and paying property taxes in their residence. And they also tend to shop and consume very close to where they live. This last item is the section of the covenants of our sale agreement, which shows the restrictions of who we can't sell to. So there's one section in the Walmart Agreement of Sale, we can't sell to any listed businesses. So another question that came up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
And once again, Ryan, awesome.
Hi, my name is Nick Chablaski and I live on 234 North Broadway in Milwaukee. I came here because I wished to kind of give a personal testimony to the power that Beyond Vision has and how we change the lives of people who are blind. And I wanted to do so hopefully by just telling you a little bit about myself and sharing a little bit about my personal story. And trust me, if you knew Beyond Vision the way that I know Beyond Vision, I've been there for six years, there's no doubt in my mind that any community would welcome us with open arms, and we hope that we can have a partnership here in West Dallas. So you might not be able to tell by looking at me, I don't travel with a cane and I don't have a guide dog, but I am legally blind. I have a rare condition called Stargardt's macular dystrophy, which essentially has left me with no usable central vision. So I rely entirely on my peripherals for my sight. And it hasn't held me back. It leads to challenges, but it definitely has not held me back. And so, this condition hit me when I was about 15 or 16 years old, and I've been living it ever since. And I can, going on Beyond Vision, well, first, I went to school at UWM, graduated, got a degree in marketing, and after I graduated, it was a real struggle to find employment. Finding a sustainable job is one of the most difficult things that I've had to go through in my life. I was fortunate enough to actually land here as an intern as the city of West Dallas. I worked in the Department of Development and Department of Housing. It was a wonderful opportunity and I thank everybody here for that. I saw John Stebel, my old boss John. I don't know if any of you guys really remember seeing me around. There might be some familiar faces up there that I can't really tell. I know Mike May and Marty Weigl and Alder Chablaski and Mayor Devine. It's nice to see you guys again. It's been a little while since I've been here. But I had, the internship here was fantastic. I would have actually loved to have stayed a little bit longer. There was sort of a difficulty and just another example of how difficult it is to find meaningful employment and to get that job. I was an intern and it was only supposed to be a couple months. And I was filling a position from someone who had left. And that job was posted publicly and I was qualified for the job. I thought I had done a pretty good job. John can maybe tell me otherwise. But part of the requirement of the job was to pass a typing test, a simple typing test. Well, as part of that typing test, I was supposed to read something and transcribe it. And unfortunately, my vision got in the way of that, so I was unable to pass a simple typing test, which essentially disqualified me from the job. So it's just another example of the difficulties that my vision has had in my life and my ability to find meaningful work. After that, I did find Beyond Vision and I can honestly say, working with everybody there, it changed my life. I was given the tools, the training, everything I needed to be successful. As I said, I've been there for six years now. I'm the Fund Development Leader. I've learned from Barbara who spoke earlier. She's an excellent mentor. I couldn't have asked for anyone better. And so, I was just given the proper tools and the training and everything that I needed to pursue and continue on with my career. And I know that there's hundreds of people that have gone through Beyond Vision and there's going to be hundreds more that will say the exact same. And I really do, it's gotten to the point in my life where I'm able to now, instead of trying to struggle to pay rent and live day to day, I earn a sustaining wage. I've found someone who I've married and I'm very happy to say that I'm expecting my first son here at the end of August. And we are currently looking for a home. And one of the biggest factors for me is location and proximity to work. I would be very happy to say that we would buy a home in West Dallas. I grew up here. I went to West Dallas School District. I'm a product of West Dallas and I love it here. So I really do hope that we can come and you guys can welcome us with open arms. And I hope that I can say that Beyond Vision and myself are going to be here in West Dallas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julius Perez. Thank you for welcoming myself and my coworkers to speak to you in behalf of my other coworkers. I, like Nick, initially was visually impaired. I grew up with, or was born with glaucoma, so I was legally blind. And then about five and a half years ago, I woke up one morning and I was completely blind. And there was a number of things that happened to me. At one point, I really thought my life was over. I thought I had been taking care of myself my whole life. I pretty much was on my own most of my life anyway. At that point, I felt like this is, I can't get up anymore. I've fallen too many times. And my biggest struggle is that I always took care of myself. And I couldn't imagine, how could I work without vision? How could I, you know, be myself? How could I take care of myself? So I immediately went into a depression and went to church. I was praying, but internally, I was fighting with God for many reasons. I didn't understand what the point was. I went home that day and I had decided that I was gonna go into a nursing home. I couldn't take care of myself. And so, I was in my room and I was kind of going back and forth, crying and going through all kinds of stuff. And I heard a commercial about Beyond Vision. And for some reason, it was like the funniest thing I ever heard. Because the commercial talked about blind people working in a machine shop. And I thought, how ridiculous is that? And the whole weekend, that commercial nagged at me. And I realized at one point that I couldn't go into the nursing home until I at least tried to get a job. Not so much to succeed, but, so I had something to co-sign that I was right, that it was okay to give up. So I went into my interview. I was, at the time, about 400 pounds. I had all kinds of issues, medical issues, including just coming off a heart attack and going blind and being depressed. And I spoke with the HR person and he just kept telling me, mm, mm, yeah, I hear you. And I kept thinking, he's not listening to me. He can't possibly, this interview should have been over in five minutes. You know, he should have said, okay, you're right. You can't work. Go on. And I would have been on my way to the nursing home interview. But he took me out on the floor. He introduced me to one of the staff people. He gave me a couple of screws and a nut. And he said, what are you gonna do with that? I put it together and he said, yeah, you can work here. So I went home and I realized that I got a job. I wasn't intending to get a job. I was looking for a reason or an excuse. When I went there, on my first week, there was a number of things that happened. The first thing is that all the answers I needed, not just to work and be independent, but how to do it, how to live life independently, was right in front of me. There was people all around me who were doing it. They were bringing up families. They were buying homes. They were getting married. They were living normal lives. And it was through a number of things, but like Nick underlined, the tools weren't necessarily given to you. They were there. You find them as you find them. So that's kind of my story. The question I've heard a couple of times is why West Dallas? And it's funny because I live in West Dallas. I just moved to West Dallas about two years ago because it got me closer to my job. I just last week was out in the Area Sam's Club, looking around to see where I could move if this would have happened. I have a number of prospect apartment buildings that I've looked over. I already have a plan, in case this works. My coworkers are the same way. What I want you to know about this working group is that we're dedicated, we're focused, and we are the 30% who are beating this issue. We're the ones who are working. We're the successful blind people. I want to share one last thing with you. It's a kind of a mantra I have. I arrived here because there was finally no refuge from myself and the darkness. Until I confronted myself in the eyes and hearts of others, I had no safety. Until I suffered others to share my secrets, I was alone. Afraid to be alone, you will remain alone. At Beyond Vision, we believe that if you treat a blind person as they are, they remain as they are. But if you treat them as they could be and ought to be, they become as they could be and should be. Because Beyond Vision helps us rebuild our lives, our dreams, our ambitions, we should preserve this place to all forever. That's what I would like to share with you about Beyond Vision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation?
Hi, my name is Linda Hutter and this is Paula Wink.
Sorry, can we have your addresses too, please?
I'm sorry?
Addresses for our record.
On South 75th. And we are here representing Fairview Neighborhood Park Association as secretary and vice president. I would like to announce the Fairview Park Neighborhood Association elected officers and board members on March 30th, 2019. The officers are as follows. President is Patty Concha. Vice President is Paula Wink. Secretary is Linda Hutter. And Treasurer is Dave Reima-Zuski. Board members include the officers just named and two at-large board members, Lisa Albright and Marty Weigl. On April 10th, 2019, bylaws were adopted and passed by officers and board members. On April 23rd, 2019, bylaws and names of officers and board members were submitted to the city of West Dallas manager of community development, Patrick Schloss. At this time, I would also like to announce and invite all residents to our next upcoming meeting to be held this Wednesday, May 5th, at 6:30 in the evening at Ms. Sueno's. Thank you.
Thank you.
May 8th. I'm sorry.
No worries. Thanks. Is there anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Kevin Rudden, managing partner of the Berkey-Cushman-Wakefield Company. I think you guys know who we are. We've done quite a bit of real estate in West Dallas. Before that, my father did a lot of real estate in West Dallas with Rudden and DeHaas on Beecher Street. That name's probably long past, forgotten. But what I'm gonna talk about is that, I understand there's some discussion about retail, industrial zoning, and everything else like that. I'll give you a little story. I sit on the bid board of, in the area of the city of Milwaukee. And years ago, there was a nonprofit that wanted to come in. And I was on that board and we said, you know, I don't think that would work here. And we kind of fought it. And it got in over our objections. And we, to this day, which is about 16 years, we say, thank God, we didn't win. Because what it did, we found out, is that, and I've been on this board for a long time and it's the River West area of Milwaukee, we found that that area has had one of the greatest appreciations in real estate over a period of time, stabilized housing and stuff like that. What we found is that people, companies and different mixes of companies and entities in an area stabilized the real estate in that area more than if it was just retail or just industrial or just housing and stuff like that. It stabilized it because we weren't depending on one type of use to be in that area. We depended on a lot of other uses to really take up buildings, use the space, and use the community. Since then, we put in bike trails, a number of other things. So really, what I'm telling you is that sometimes communities get stuck on what should be in a specific area. And I think sometimes, if you let a lot of uses in, you really do help that area more than just having big box retail or another grocery store or another lumberyard or whatever. I mean, industrial market right now, in the city of Milwaukee, in the city of West Dallas, and most of the community is actually appreciating faster than retail because of the demand for space. And we've done several talking in our industry, as far as retail goes, we basically haven't got done demolishing it. There's more demolishing that needs to be done. With the big boxes, if you look around, it's what's happening in the metropolitan area. A number of us believe that we've done, the studies we've done, is a third of the big boxes get reused in retail, a third get demolished, and another third go to another use. And that trend will probably continue for the next, probably next couple, two, three years before finally it'll be washed out, where it'll be somewhat stabilized. You're certainly gonna have some big boxes vacant because landowners or property owners, for some reason, aren't willing to bite the bullet and tear it down. But a lot of the retail buildings are not suited for industrial. This is one of those properties that you can actually reuse in a really functioning manner and not have to demolish it. And the other one is that the outlot is a very possible scenario. There aren't too many, what I call, three quarters acre to an acre, where property in that central area, right where we are, that's available for sale, that's a buildable site. There really aren't that many. There's some bigger units, like the one on Greenfield Avenue with the Pick 'n Save and such. So since the last one went long, I'll cut it off. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. Going to item H on our agendas, our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Mayor's report this evening. I really, I just want to kind of give a general announcement that we had a flash of nice summer weather this weekend. It was great and short, but we have a lot of events coming up in the city this summer. And I'll try to remind people as they come up, but we have got bands and concerts in the parks. We have got events at the farmer's market. We have food truck events. We have à la carte. Moving on later into the summer, we have the car show, both of those in our downtown. Just, we're trying to do a lot of very cool and exciting things to bring people to the city as well as, you know, provide something to do for people that reside in the city. So please keep an eye on that. So please keep, keep an eye on our website, keep an eye on our social media as we announce these events, and try to make some of them. It's going to be an exciting summer here, and hope that all of you watching and in the audience are able to take part in some of those events over the course of the warm weather, because we all know it doesn't last nearly long enough. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Oh, I should say, I just want to wish our council president a happy birthday, which was yesterday. Happy birthday, Tom. Move on to item J. Do we have any reports from the older persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
Just real quickly, two things. On the Fairview Park Neighborhood Association, for people that are curious about the boundaries, the boundaries are roughly the North City Limits, which is called the Hank Aaron Bike Trail, 70th Street on the east, Greenfield Avenue on the south, but it includes the south, the businesses on the south side of Greenfield Avenue, and then 77th Street on the west. So that meeting is open, really, to anybody, but the Fairview Park Neighborhood Association is, is that area. And then, one more thing, we, heard me talk last couple meetings about the Community Improvement Foundation Gala that we held, it was very successful. I want to thank the foundation. Trish Wickenhauser did a great job, she's the chair, a lot of volunteers stepped up. I think by all, by all comments that I've seen, the gala was very successful. We have not had a final wrap-up meeting on the dollar amount raised, and again, the dog park that we're building on the west side of town is the recipient of that. I think we're well on our way to making our goal, our budget goals, about $85,000 for that project, so. Again, thank the gala, it was at the Zafari Center, and that dog park is right now on schedule to be open late summer or early fall, and there'll be information on the website. And for all those of you who didn't get a chance to come to the gala and donate, it's not too late, there's still information up on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other older persons' reports? Alderman Stefanski.
Just wanted to let everybody know, in case you haven't heard, West Dallas will be highlighted tomorrow morning on the Fox News Channel. They will be, Fox and Friends will be at Johnny V's, which is in the second district, from 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM tomorrow morning. So just want to let everybody know.
Thank you. Any other older persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
First of all, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. None of us would be here without you. On May 18th, there is a citywide cleanup in the morning, and you're invited to come down to the satellite station of the Police Department on 70th and National and participate and help clean up your neighborhood or another designated place of the city. Thanks. You can find the information online. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other reports from the older persons? Anybody on that side of the room want to say something?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of minutes of the common council regular meeting of April 16th, 2019.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any adjustments or changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item L is, item's not referred to committee, I'll ask for motion to refer items three through eight to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item M is our standing committee reports, the License and Health Committee.
Mayor Devine, I will report those out after recess meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Chapuski.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? We are in recess.